You're gonna wait, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, we'll get you on then when we, when we get to that item on the agenda. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 11, 2021. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to just indicate to anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or any item not on the agenda, for that matter, to kindly fill out a speaker request form, and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. We do have two folks who have indicated they'd like to participate publicly in the meeting, and we'll get to those folks in just a moment. We have a full council tonight. One of our members, Alderman Finoukan, from our second ward, is attending on Zoom. Also, our clerk, Lynn Fazekas, is meeting remotely and will participate on Zoom. And with that, I'd like to call on Clerk Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finoukan.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdam.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to ask you to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now on item C on our agenda this evening, and that is to approve tonight's agenda. I'll see if there are any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Our agenda is approved as printed. We now move to public participation. I have one letter that was submitted online. That individual would like his letter read now, and I do have an individual who would like to speak to an item on the agenda, and we'll wait until we get to that item tonight. Our first public participant, if you will, I will read a letter from John J. Wet, 127 Hilton Park Drive, DeKalb. Good evening, Council. I hope you all had an enjoyable holiday season. Now it's time to get back to work. COVID-19 has wreaked havoc on our business community, in particular, our small business community. These businesses have not gotten much help, if any, from our federal government. This has certainly put many of our restaurants and bars in a very tight spot, and chances are that if these businesses don't receive any assistance, they will shutter their doors forever. With that said, my suggestion would be to cut the liquor licensing fees for these businesses in half. I understand that this will be an immediate slash to the city's budget. However, if these eateries close their doors permanently, there will be a permanent loss of tax revenue. Please consider helping our neighbors. Thank you, John J. Wet, from DeKalb. And just for the information of those folks at home who may not have an agenda, we will be discussing that as a consideration this evening, that particular topic. Okay, let's move right along. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is a wonderful proclamation that I have the pleasure of reading, and after I read this proclamation, I would like to ask our city manager, Bill Nicholas, to pose for a photo with Tom Inmoden, who is here representing the DeKalb Rotary Club. This proclamation reads thusly: "DeKalb Rotary Club Day, January 22, 2021. Whereas the Rotary Club of DeKalb, Illinois was officially organized January 22, 1921, and whereas the Rotary Club of DeKalb celebrates this long history of service in our community and the world, and whereas many volunteer hours are served by DeKalb Rotary members, including service to Meals on Wheels, Salvation Army, Bookcase Literacy Project, Safe Passage, Kishawaki Symphony Orchestra, Feed My Starving Children, and recitals for seniors in our community, and whereas the DeKalb Rotary Club honors high school students in DeKalb with the DeKalb Student of the Month and provides scholarships annually, and whereas the DeKalb Rotary Club is part of international service efforts, including polio eradication and assistance in Central America and Africa, and whereas the DeKalb Rotary Club will celebrate 100 years from its visionary beginnings on January 22, 1921, throughout the entire year of 2021, with programs, service, and celebration. Therefore, I, Jerry Smith, as mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the day of Friday, January 22, 2021, as DeKalb Rotary Club Day, in celebration of its 100 years of service to this community. And we extend our deepest appreciation for their many contributions. We wish the club the very best and all our support in continuing the tradition of service. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of DeKalb to be affixed this 11th day of January, 2021." Tom Inmoden has been a longtime member of the DeKalb Rotary Club. As a matter of fact, I learned today that Tom was the president of this club when it celebrated its 75th anniversary. That would have been 25 years ago. We didn't realize that Tom was quite that old, but who knows? Tom, if you'd come up here to forward, I'm gonna ask the city manager, Nicholas, to present this certificate.
We're gonna stand in front of the council, and Scott Zach is gonna take a picture.
Tom, would you like to say a few words? If so, please go to the podium.
Well, thank you very much. It's okay if I?
Sure, take that off.
Thank you very much on behalf of the DeKalb Rotary Club and its 100 years. Wow, 100 years. And we think about this and the impact that Rotary's had on not only our DeKalb community, but on the entire county. And to give, put this in perspective, we backed this off over 75 years. Rotary Club put the first swimming pool in DeKalb County at Camp Rotary McQueen. Now, since then, it's been filled up. But Rotary Club has been active in local communities, county, and of course, our international work. We have some specific distinctions in our club. We've had three district governors, Herman Cotilu, Jim Forrester, and Juette Isgood, that were district governors. In Rotary, prior to 10 years ago, when they changed the attendance, you had a week before and a week after your meeting to make it up. We had members that made up meetings in Europe, around the world, in Asia. We had two Rotary Club members that had 50 years of continuous membership, not missing a meeting in 50 years. And that was Sai Kalal, who, and then Del Schaefer. Those gentlemen are gone. DeKalb Club has the distinction of being the first club in the United States to accept women. And that was with Jerry Cerny, who owned WOBK, was adamant about if we ever let women into our club, which for the sake of Rotary, we did, and just kept us surviving, that we got the first women in the United States into our club. If somebody else did it, they did it simultaneously. And also, in regards to our Polio Plus initiative, which was Rotary International's desire to eliminate polio throughout the world, and of course, we all, at our age, can remember when we got in line and took the sugar cubes at school and the Dixie cups, but the rest of the world, polio was a pandemic. And so, we got together, and for each dollar, we got five immunizations, and then with each immunization, took care of five diseases that were common to the world. We were the first club in the United States, this little club in DeKalb, to meet the criteria, and we over-doubled the dollar amount. So we've had a good, active club. It's a smaller club today than it was years ago, but these club members really rolled up their sleeves and worked really hard for both the international community and our local community. And with that, I thank you very much, very kind of you, and thank you for recognizing us.
Thank you, Tom, and congratulations on behalf of the city, the city council, to the DeKalb Rotary Club for 100 years of community service. Our next item on the, on the presentation agenda is our State of the City address. I don't believe I've ever had the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm gonna have a chance, right now, to do that. I, in preparing our State of the City address, as late as Friday afternoon, I made the decision to tape it and play it tonight. We're doing this, the quality of the presentation and the televised quality is going to be much better than the camera here tonight. And so, with that, I'm gonna ask our IT department to wave its magic wand, and I'd like to introduce the mayor of the City of DeKalb.
As you may know, the City of DeKalb requires its mayor to deliver remarks publicly on the State of the City each year. I'd like to take a few minutes to comment on a number of topics that have captured the attention of our community during the past year, and then to provide some personal thoughts and just what we can expect in the year ahead. It was just six weeks ago, in early December, when NIU President Lisa Freeman and I appeared on a program sponsored by the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce. We called it the State of the Comm University, and the presentation dealt with three topics that we both felt impacted everyone in this college town. Those three were coronavirus, social justice, and economic growth. I'd like to share several observations on those arenas, in addition to a few others during the next few minutes. You know, it's been said that change is a constant. Gosh, is that ever true with the coronavirus and how it has impacted every man, woman, and child on this planet? Here in DeKalb, we've struggled with keeping our residents safe and healthy while still helping to allow our businesses the ability to carry out commerce. Now, I don't know if we've succeeded completely on either count, but I can honestly say that it isn't from a lack of trying. Since March of last year, COVID has been at the center of attention in our community. Every day, we've been trying to balance the health risks with the economic impacts. Schools and parents struggle with how and where to educate our kids. Our small businesses are the heart of our community, and they've been very, very hit hard by this pandemic. I'm so impressed with how these businesses have pivoted and how they've really made it work under the extreme limitations placed on them. From the get-go, a group got together to see what could be done to help these businesses, and DeKalb County Unites was born. Unites stands for University and Neighbors Investing Together for Economic Success. More than 40 internet webinars were hosted. Information provided on federal and state relief programs. Posters were distributed urging customers to wear masks and social distance. As a city, we've remained open for business as much as possible, meeting the expectations of our citizens and businesses. This council has continued to meet in a public scenario, having taken on surroundings at a new city hall downtown and in the DeKalb Public Library. You know, we've listened to the plight of our bars and restaurants, attempting to provide financial relief in the form of delayed or waived fees. Realizing that municipal government can only do so much, we've engaged our state and federal partners in seeking and successfully obtaining financial help in the form of grants directly tied to the pandemic. Now we find ourselves struggling with a vaccine distribution system that may very well stretch deep into 2021. As a community, we will continue to extend our deepest gratitude to those first responders and to our friends and neighbors in the healthcare community. It was about midway through the pandemic, in late spring and early summer, when the killing of George Floyd at the hands of law enforcement officers in Minneapolis occurred. As a result, a national social justice movement arose throughout this land and throughout the City of DeKalb. Our community talked and marched and talked and marched even more throughout the summer. Through many more meetings of the city council and the Human Relations Commission, we took up the challenge of implementing procedural justice with greater transparency, accountability, and with an honest recognition of the past and present biases that we may have. As I indicated during our State of the Comm University program, we humbly recognize that we have much to learn and much to celebrate. Institutional changes are unfolding throughout our government, most notably in our police department, where a reconfiguration of resources has helped to create a new Community Support Services Division. Those reallocated dollars of 2.2 million will help us better focus on community engagement, crime-free housing, and behavioral health. To underline our firm commitment to build on our city's commitment to justice, we co-sponsored, along with NIU, a virtual conversation with Dr. John Powell, a renowned international expert in African-American and ethnic studies, and a fierce advocate of equity and inclusion. This late October event, billed as "Belonging," has inspired ideas and encouraged action that has prioritized the need to appreciate how our differences can become our strength. The past year has presented us all a number of challenges as we strive to celebrate that diversity while aligning ourselves in an ongoing mission towards greater social justice. Our 2020 initiatives, I believe, will lead to an even greater progress in 2021. Ladies and gentlemen, it aligns itself with our ambition to reaffirm a city where our families, our businesses, and our culture prosper in an environment in which all people are treated with dignity, equity, and respect. Now, you've undoubtedly heard me talk about the great momentum we have going for us here in DeKalb, and the obvious reason is the tremendous strides we've seen this past year in economic development. I've often preached the ongoing need to collaborate and communicate. There may have been no greater testament to that than what's happened to bring Ferrara Candy and Facebook to DeKalb. This not only occurred shortly after preliminary resources and overtures from these companies took place, but DeKalb had our economic development table pretty well set several years ago. You may recall that when Toyota Mazda was eyeing our area for our community's southern boundary, that we realized that we really needed a playbook that explained why DeKalb County was indeed the place to be. It was that experience, working closely with NIU, Kishawaki College, and the DeKalb Economic Development Corporation, along with others in the region, where an effective strategy was considerably strengthened. The result laid the foundation that would eventually result in these 2020 economic successes. Folks, it took hard work, months of deliberation, often with corporate site selectors that were identified with codenames, monikers like Project Tamer, or Project Donkey, or Vettus. Through it all, the City of DeKalb sent a consistent message to those companies. We have a region, a county, a land developer, and a community that wants you here. Let's not forget the fact that the State of Illinois, specifically Representatives Keiker and Demmer, provided their help. And we have partners, partners like our utility companies, NIU, Kish College, our water reclamation district, our townships, our county board, among others. Ultimately, it would be revealed that it was a world-class, let me repeat, world-class companies like Ferrara and Facebook that announced they would locate in DeKalb. What's happening now on Gerler Road is a 1.3 billion, that's billion with a B, that's a $1.3 billion investment in our community. Those are major bucks, but let's not forget about the investments that continue to be made in downtown DeKalb, in an areas along Sycamore Road. Pardon the pun, but the cornerstone of much of this happening could very well be linked back to Pappas Development's Cornerstone Project at First Street and Lincoln Highway. Now, there are opponents to tax increment financing, TIF, I'll admit, but what this city has done in utilizing TIF in the right way has added significant punch to the economic momentum that is happening right now. Anchoring downtown improvements has been the remarkable redo of the Egyptian Theater. During the past year, we've seen Plaza DeKalb take shape at the corner of Second and Lincoln Highway. Agora Tower at Fourth and Locust, soon to develop in the old Moody property. The opening of Hilton Home Two Suites on Annie Glynn. The Isaac Suites on the southwest corner of Route 23 and Oakland Drive. The expansion of Warily Custom Fabricating off of Harvest Store Drive. The opening of repurposed properties that now house Aldi's. And new construction on Pizza Hut on West Lincoln and Raising Cane's Chicken on Sycamore Road. These are but a few examples of growth in our community. Added to the excitement of this year's economic development is the move to City Hall, to our classic character surrounding downtown. Next spring, we look forward to the new Johann DeKalb Suites. It's a three-building development where our former municipal building withstood the 52-year test of time. You know, we're pleased to see that NIU is looking westward as plans turn into reality for the Northern Illinois Center for Sustainability. This coupled with the growth of our DeKalb County Community Gardens Organization, along with the recently announced Syngenta facility near Malta. These will all serve to enhance our region's emphasis on the commercial power of renewable energy as we meet the challenges of feeding our population and effectively managing our natural resources. We've had some key personnel changes over the past year, and I'd like to review just a few of those for you. We've named former cop Josh Bolt as our assistant city manager. Scott Zach, a veteran newsman who will bring needed communication skills to us, is our new management analyst. And Renee Riani, who has taken over at our, at our airport. We expect continued enhancement at DeKalb Taylor Airport, both in traffic and physical improvements. Now, we really need to get more of our county communities to help us to financially grow that airport even more. While I previously mentioned our police department, let's not forget to mention the great job that Bob Riddell has done as our acting top cop. Currently in the process of selecting a new permanent chief, this city is committed to naming someone who will continue to be as compassionate with the full buy-in to the recent structural changes as Chief Riddell. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention our city manager. Under Bill Nicholas's leadership over the past two years, we have literally been able to do a heck of a lot more with less. Even though we've now brought on several new employees, our total full-time equivalent number is down 205 today. You know, early on, Bill made some serious cuts as we struggled with personnel costs. And these included staff reductions, well-structured union contracts with fire, police, and asked me, and a 2021 focus on possible ways to rein in rising insurance costs. You know, it'll be up to our city council, working alongside the excellent advisory capacity of our various boards and commissions, who will assist Nicholas and his staff as the City of DeKalb continues its momentum, this momentum that's now in our grasp. This momentum includes the continuing effort of folks working on our Annie Glynn North revitalization, now that we've torn down Campus Cinema and 912 Edgbrook. Added $650,000 in funding for fiber optics, lighting, and other human service assistance. And most recently, we created the Special Services Area in that Hunter Ridge Brook area. As I conclude this State of the City, allow me to reflect for just a second on how much I've enjoyed my term as your mayor, which will be concluding in just a few months. Depending on how our citizens react to the candidates in the April 6 municipal elections, our policymaking body, namely the city council, may take on a slightly different look. This will certainly be the case with this mayor opposition. With whomever becomes my successor, I pledge my full cooperation as we transition in the spring. With all demanded permission, I'd like to expand on some personal thoughts during my last council meeting. But for now, I'd like to report that the state of our city is good. We certainly have challenges, especially in the public safety and the housing arenas, but the momentum is evident. I know it, I feel it, and I hope you share the enthusiasm, the enthusiasm, I hope you share the enthusiasm that I have for DeKalb, Illinois. Thank you.
No comment. I hope that now we have a chance to put that on our website and invite anyone who may have missed it to, to see it, and I hope you sense the, the momentum that I express and the enthusiasm I have going forward with this council and, and with, with new leadership. And again, with your permission, I'll have a few personal thoughts during that last meeting in April. Okay, we have no appointments tonight. Item F on the agenda. We do have our consent agenda, item G, and it is this consent agenda that is usually enacted by one motion, unless a member of the council would like to delete any item off of the consent agenda. Do we have any action like that? If not, I would like a motion to, to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
I, I think we still need to read that consent agenda.
We sure do. Thank you, Clerk Fazekas. The consent agenda is as follows. Three items. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 14, 2020. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 28, 2020. And three, accounts payable and payroll through January 11, 2021, in the amount of Having read that, having a motion and a second, now I would ask city clerk Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Finoukan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That consent agenda is approved as printed. We now move to item H on the agenda, public hearings. We do have one public hearing, and the first public hearing that I will open at 6:30 PM is a public hearing on an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan slash the 2020 Annual Action Plan. Before we have any possible discussion, I'd like to ask our city manager Nicholas to explain, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing relates to two resolutions further on in your agenda, and I'm happy to say that what we're looking to do is amend the five-year and the one-year plan in order to account for an additional $272,425 in CAREZAC funding to help us address the impact of coronavirus on those who are, who need it the most, persons of limited means in our community.
Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan? Again, as city manager Nicholas had indicated, we do have a couple of items on which we will ask to move tonight. If not, I would close this public hearing at 6:32. We have one consideration for discussion tonight, and that is the 2021 Liquor License Renewal Update. Before we open it up for any possible discussion, city manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite briefly, what I wanted to say is that we were approached as we reached the end of one liquor license cycle and about to start another one on January 1st, and I've identified in your background that we have three cycles. And this is the one that runs from January 1 to December 31st. There's another one that begins on May 1st, another one that starts in the fall. And we had some inquiries, not a lot, from some restaurants, bars, those that had liquor, and there are a variety of liquor licenses, about the possibility of installment payments. And as you know, and as I mentioned in the background, we've been allowing installment payments since May 1st at the council's direction, all the way up through December 31st for those licenses that were due to be paid by the end of 2020. And they were asking if it could be extended into the new fiscal year, the new calendar year for them. And as there was no meeting scheduled over the holidays, I did, on my authority, ask Ruth to, for the time being, let those people know who would inquire that we would hold off on any insistence on the payment of those licenses until we had a chance to talk. And so here's your opportunity, it's the first opportunity since the 1st of the year. And what we have been saying is that they would have until June 1st to pay up for, basically arrears, for what had been owed otherwise by the end of the year. So what I'm asking you tonight is to confirm that this is agreeable to you, because the code has obviously a different set of rules that never anticipated coronavirus or anything of this sort. And this will get us through, I think, I'm certainly no seer or prophet, but it appears that we will get to the point where we can reopen some of our bars and restaurants before the end of this first quarter. And what we propose is near the end of the second quarter that this would expire. So that's what's before you tonight.
So while we have admittedly given the establishments some assistance up to the tune of $6,000 in tax over the past year, what we're asking now is to simply delay the inception, if you will, of paying the license renewal fee for 2021. Correct. With that, I'm going to open it up to any discussion. Alderman Morris?
Yeah, I think we need to do whatever we can to support our local small businesses. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think we need to do whatever we can to support our local businesses. So I'm very open to, I'm absolutely in support of this, but I wonder if we can't do any more. But I understand, like, we've made a budget, we'd like to stick to it. I'd be eager to hear if anyone else is eager to offer our small businesses more.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Alderman Finuchin. You know, I certainly agree with city manager Nicholas's wanting to delay the collection of it, but I'm wondering if, along with Carolyn, we might not be able to waive a part of this fee, part of the annual fee, as they have continued to be closed. I do not have a percentage in mind, I do not have any dollar amount in mind, I'm just wondering if we might at least have a discussion regarding that possibility.
Well, we could certainly have that discussion. I have a couple of comments, but I'd like to open it up to any other council member. Greg, did you have something?
I agree with everything that's been said.
Okay.
We don't move with Carolyn's point, with Alderman Finuchin's point. I want to be as supportive as we can.
Alderman Smith?
I too agree with both the other, all the other Aldermen, I guess. City manager, I'm concerned about the state side of the taxes. We're not reporting to them correctly that they're not in arrears, so, and they still have to pay their state liquor licenses fees, correct?
Yes.
So there's no, that's still a burden on them as well.
There's a state license, as you say, for many of these than a local license.
Right. And there's, I guess where I'm going with that is that if they become arrears with the state, then automatically suspend their license regardless of what we do, right?
That could happen.
Okay. And I'd really hate to see that happen.
Yeah.
I think we should probably agree, do as much as we can, you know, and...
If I may, I wanted to show you exactly where we stood, but I would have been, I would certainly have embarrassed a number of proprietors who didn't probably want the world to know that they're X short of hitting the mark, although it might arguably be public information at this point. But so you would have seen, if you had seen that list, that most people have tried to pay something, but some are still in arrears. And some businesses did not reopen after the council established its credit back in March for them to be forgiven, the first $3,000 in taxes per establishment. And so they, those that reopened still have that $3,000 credit out there, basically. So it's a mixed bag here. It isn't that everybody is asking for this. We have, as I mentioned in the background, we had, let me just catch my notes here. Two had not been able to pay anything, and 12 had paid everything. And then in the middle, a middle 15 still owed sums, varying from a couple hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars. So this is not a big amount. On the other hand, we have, there are some equity issues here. Those people who didn't have your assurance, one way or another, paid in November, maybe, in anticipation, because they had some money, and they thought, well, maybe we'll be able to reopen for the season, and now they weren't able to do that. So you have to consider whether you want to return that money or not, to be fair across the board. And then what do we do if the governor decides to soften the mitigation requirements here in the next 30 days, which is very possible? We're right now one of the four criteria short, and we're very close to hitting that mark.
I have, I have those figures, and I just got those this afternoon. In order for a region to move forward, we must hit four key metrics. We must have a positivity rate of 12% or lower. Ours is now 10.1%. We must have ICU and hospital bed availability of greater than 20%. We have hospital bed availability 25%, and ICU bed 21%. And then what we need is decreases in hospitalizations on seven of the 10 preceding days. We have four days. So we're so close right now to where the governor could open this up. And I think that, coupled with the fact that we do have the vaccine distribution, albeit slow, that I think further discussion as we delay the payment of these license fees, we could, we could, we could act at a later time. I don't think we need to act tonight. Yes, Bill?
Well, I think we need to act tonight to confirm that the staff have made a reasonable decision, at least for the short term here.
So you're acting for some consensus.
And the other thing I should mention to you, and I think this is, this certainly influenced our opinion and my opinion in writing this up, we were not asked to forgive or to have or cut a percentage out of what's owed. We were asked for time, because that's what they're all hoping for, and a short period of time until they can get open again. And if it comes a longer period of time, we can act again.
Absolutely.
We can tell you where we are at the end of March, at the end of the quarter, and if we need to forgive, we can forgive at that point. I think at that point, we're looking at some business closures if there is nothing in this next quarter. I think that, I support that 100%. But at this point, I think we're sort of in a very gray and very transitional period.
I think what we want to do is get the message out to our bars and restaurants that we are sympathetic with their clause, we are trained to look at all the metrics from state, the mitigations, et cetera. We've done what we could up to now, and we are certainly open to further discussion as the, as the effects of the coronavirus and the mitigations take place. Does that make sense? Yeah. Alderman Smith?
I agree. I think what we have to give is not money, but time, and I think that's what we should give them.
Alderman Perkins?
Would it make sense to tie this to the tax credit portion? And the reason I say that is there are a number of different circumstances out there. Some folks really have, haven't reopened, you know, so I think those folks would seem to get more benefit. Some have reopened, some have continued to be open. So I don't know that the same number for everyone makes the same sense, if that makes any sense at all.
Everybody gets the credit unless the council wants to change that, so that's how I understood it. And I assume you want to extend that indefinitely until people have used up that credit. So everybody will at some point have, every business will have digested that $3,000 one way or another, unless they close, and then they will not have done that. And...
Maybe the credit is, maybe I misspoke. Maybe the credit isn't the right thing, but maybe I'm trying to tie it to some degree of revenue. You know, I'm trying to make some distinction between the restaurant and bar that stayed open for most of the time and the one who said, you know what, we've been closed most of the time.
The other thing you'd have to see, if there was a chart, you'd see 25 different costs.
Yep.
They're not all the same, and this could be a nightmare for, to try to calculate it, but...
Sure.
I hear what you're saying, is there some, you know, another tag there. My recommendation to you is that we give time, which is what's been asked, and what we've done is to suggest that we go out to June 1st, which is far beyond the, it actually gets into the second cycle, but that's taking no chances. At that point, I shudder to think where we are economically as a community if we can't open those businesses by then, and statewide.
Is there consensus that this makes sense, Alderman Verbic? Excuse me, Alderman Favor?
So what you had mentioned, and I hate to punish people who do the right thing. So would you suggest that we allow people who have paid in full or have made payments to receive a refund or a partial refund if they request it?
If they request it, I would say only if they request. Most of them have just said, look, I, and I've talked to a number of them, just keep it. But I'd like to know that I don't owe the next piece until we see where we are.
I would, if somebody's paid the fee and this would help their business to delay, if we were to refund that fee until June, I would be certainly, and I see head shaking, we want to help, you know, businesses in our community. And again, they paid the fee because they did the right thing. They knew it was due, they paid the fee. If this helps them, you know, we should help them.
So what I hear us saying tonight is that we are certainly open to further discussion on this. We feel that time right now is the element that we're going to move forward on in giving these folks some time, which we've said already that we will. And we, if we need to discuss this further with some more specifics based on metrics, we will do that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Does that, are you fairly clear then on where we are, Bill?
What I hear is that you support what we've done to date, and we should report back to you maybe in 60 days. I'm happy to do that, to see where we are and what people are saying at that point.
That'll be fine.
By March 1st or so.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move along now. We have, we are at item J on your agenda, resolutions. The first three resolutions deal with funding agreements with the three specific organizations. So the first one is Resolution 2021-001, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC, in the amount of $35,000 for economic development services beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Entertain a motion, please.
Who moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Our second resolution tonight, 2021-002, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $35,000 for the purpose of facilitating community events beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So, second.
Who moved? It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Bill, I did not give you the opportunity to speak on that first one. Would you like to say anything on this?
I said it all in the background.
Yeah, okay, very good. I'm sorry about that. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
I'm sorry, McAdam?
Yes.
Thank you. Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number three, resolution...
I'm sorry, McAdam?
Yes.
Thank you. Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2021-003, authorizing a tourism agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $35,000 for tourism activities beginning January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas, please.
I spent a little time in the background on this one to gauge the council's views. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, which has the mayor on the board, ex officio, I believe, mayor...
He has an non-voting member of the board, and I will recuse myself in the voting, please.
So I'll fill in a few things for you, if you don't mind, please. Has served a purpose in this area for a long time. Until very recently, a large focus of the money we've been giving them has gone into print documents, the things you would find at a roadside rest that visit the city of DeKalb and so forth. And most people are not resorting to that type of medium anymore as to find out what to do and how to do it and so forth. So I know they have been making some adjustments and doing more digital marketing and so forth. The other thing they do, though, is they do spend a fair amount of time every other year in helping to organize and supervise and carry out two major high school championships. One is the high school, the IHSA High School Football Championships, and the other is the IESA State Wrestling Championships. And that is a handful. And it happens that 2021 is one of those years. So while in the last two years I have recommended some significant cuts in our funding, this year, if we were looking for a reason, that would be the rationale. And of course, every dollar that they raise gets matched by a dollar from the state tourism office. And so I was content to recommend the grant at the same level as last year.
Any further discussion? If not, just an indication that I will be recusing myself from this vote because I am, even though I'm a non-voting member, I am a member of this board. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Seven eye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number four, Resolution 2021-004, authorizing a first amendment to the retainer agreement with Donahue and Rose, PC, for legal services for the city of DeKalb to reduce the amount of monthly retainer for basic services during 2021 fiscal year. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas?
I'll say two things. One is that we're very pleased at this unsolicited offer to reduce their rate considering the circumstances in which we all find ourselves, including them. And then I also want to say, and this isn't something they would say, and they certainly didn't say in their brief memo to me, but we've had a great bargain with this firm. And there's a lot of work that they offer that just never gets charged for. It's what happens oftentimes with municipal law, but there's just a lot of things. Ordinance violations, liens, hunter properties, a lot of stuff. And it wasn't two and a half years ago what we described to them as their daily fare. So I appreciate their work and the constant support there, they're at the other side of the phone whenever we want them, day or night.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Favor?
I would just also add, you know, thank you very much to Mr. Donahue and Mr. Rose. They have, you had some big shoes to fill, and you've done a really good job over the last two years. I really appreciate all that you've done for the city.
Yes, thank you, John. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number five, Resolution 2021-005, authorizing the city manager to sign agreements for insurance coverage effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021 in the amount of $578,428. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the background, we have had a relationship with this particular provider for a considerable number of years. They cover our liability and property risks, and they provide also what is known in the business as excess coverage, sort of the stop loss in case we experience extraordinary challenges, fiscally speaking. And we've been generally happy with their work. However, the common or conventional approach is every three to five years to go out and test the market. And we wanted to do it here, but we were at the end of the year when we noticed that our rate was going up in an extraordinary fashion. There was no way to test the market in 30 days. So with that, we are recommending a one-year extension, and we've already, Assistant City Manager Bolt and I have already started taking preliminary steps toward testing the market so, in our broad insurance coverages, including health. So this is what I think we have to do. There's just no way that, at this point, that we would be a wounded duck going into the market right now. They would not give us a better rate, probably.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number six, Resolution 2021-006, authorizing a grant up to $25,000 to the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District for the relocation of a neighborhood sewer trunk line at 217 Franklin Street. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Fanoukun. City Manager Nicholas?
Just to say, this is pursuant to the council's direction from the last regular meeting.
Right. Any further discussion? Yeah, we had talked about this at some length last time. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
That resolution is approved. Thank you. Number seven, Resolution 2021-007, approving a second substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant 2020-2024 Five-Year Consolidated Plan and the 2020 Annual Action Plan, that's one-year use of funds, for program year 27, April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2021, adding $272,425 in Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funds. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. It is on this point of information on which the public hearing was held. City Manager Nicholas?
Mayor, I want to give a considerable amount of credit to Joanne Rouse, who is our community services coordinator, is here in the audience tonight. She is almost every meeting, and particularly when we have the good fortune to be in line to receive more federal funds to help those in our community who can use it most. And it's her tending of all of the emails that come out, the notifications that come out to have seen this opportunity. And so it comes to you in two pieces. You've had a public hearing already. This particular part is, it's a federally mandated amendment to the plan. So we have a plan. We got to amend the plan to bring in the $272,000. If you do that, then the next resolution is a companion that tells you how we're going to use that money, at least for the public services, not-for-profits, and where it would go. So I ask that you approve this piece of it.
Any further discussion? I can't believe, I can't begin to tell you how many programs like this Joanne Rouse works on, and what a marvelous job she does on a continuing basis. This year, I've even given her more work because I get all kinds of emails regarding the potential grant dollars that may, and I stress, may be applicable to the city of DeKalb. So I send them to Joanne and say, perhaps we can take a look at this. I send them to Assistant City Manager Bolt and City Manager Nicholas. And this team in City Hall, working very, very hard, were able to get, as I alluded to in the state of the city, were able to get some additional dollars, and we appreciate that, believe me, because every little dollar does help. Roll call.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. We now move to Resolution 2021-008. Alderman Smith has indicated that he will be recusing himself from voting on this particular resolution. But Resolution 2021-008 would authorize the conditional approval of agreements with DeKalb County Community Gardens, Family Service Agency, Community Action Program, Friends of the Regional Office of Education, Voluntary Action Center for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Year 2020 CARES Act Funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus in the amount of $214,324. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved for omnibus form.
Thank you. Alderman Fanoukun, second, please.
Second.
Alderman Favor, it's been moved that we approve these in omnibus form. Moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven eye?
That resolution is approved. Thank you. Number nine, Resolution 2021-009, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated and Core and Main in an amount not to exceed $80,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager?
Just, we've been through this before. Usually we don't ask you to waive competitive bidding, but some years ago, we went out when we were trying to upgrade our water meter system and convert to radio devices so that we don't have to knock on the door like they used to in the old days and kind of go down in your basement, read your meter and so forth. Now we can do it from the road. And when we did that, we knew that, I wasn't here, but certainly Brian Favor was here, and we knew that once you commit to a couple of different types of meters, you're kind of stuck with them or else you reach a certain point where you'd be replacing thousands of them at a crack just to make the system work. And over time, we'll reach that threshold where this system is no longer technologically what we want, and we'll have to think about it. But in the meantime, we're just asking for the replacement cost, and we could budget it $80,000 for a mix of both Badger water meters and the Core and Main equipment, and that's what's before you. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. We now move to ordinances. We have no ordinances for second reading this evening. We have several for first reading. The first one is Ordnance 2021-001, Amending Chapter 59, Economic Development Commission, Section 59.01 Commission Created and Subsection G Meetings. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. Two of our commissions have elected to move to bimonthly schedule, knowing that it would give them a better chance of stronger staff support because of the limitations we have on our staff currently for the support of some 14 boards and commissions. The city's municipal code currently states that the Economic Development Commission will meet on a monthly schedule, and so we brought this to the council to make that amendment. They had their most recent meeting on Friday, just confirmed their interest in moving to bimonthly meetings, and the mayor has visited with the chair, and they seem to be very copacetic about this, so.
Yeah, this was discussed at both economic development and during our next one, enhancement. In economic development's case, Jeff Richardson and his group agreed that every other month would probably be more workable and more productive for that commission. So that's what we're asking to vote on tonight. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
That ordinance is approved on first reading. Does anyone?
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by... It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we waive second reading and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. Number two, Ordinance 2021-002, amending Chapter 65, Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, by adding new section 65.05, meetings. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Morris. This was pretty much described in our last discussion on our last ordinance, but I'll give City Manager Nicholas the opportunity, you waive that opportunity?
Waive it.
Okay. Any discussion? This is for the Community Enhancement Commission. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Is there a desire to waive second reading and approve?
Move to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance this evening. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That ordinance is approved. Number three, Ordinance 2021-003, approving a special use permit for a parking lot as a principal use when located within 300 feet of the use served, 1030 East Locust Street, Naring Electric Works. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Faver. Prior to City Manager commenting on this, we do have one member of the public who would like to address this ordinance, Damian Wilford. Mr. Wilford, if you'd come to the lectern, please, you're from, you live at 1018 East Locust.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, please.
There's not just me, I live over there, like the third house over from us, but I've got a couple of neighbors that are concerned about a couple of things, and one of them's here in the audience, he lives right next door to that. As you can see, the parking lot for that building over there, I monitor that all the time, and it's usually only half full, three quarters full, but what is a problem is there's semi trucks that come there delivering materials, and they're, they have our street there blocked, plus 10th Street going down, and just the other day, Friday, my wife had a heck of a time trying to get out of there with the semis, so we ended up calling the police department. And we have no real objection for the parking lot going there, as long as it's for the cars, not the trucks, because the trucks are there, and there's temporary gravel there, that shows it nice and green, but that's all gravel that got put in, I don't know how that got put in, but, and there was semis parked on that spot, once or twice, we've seen trucks turning their engines off and waiting there hours, and we had to kind of go out and ask them politely to move and stuff, so there is concerns. Also, there's containers there, the spools that they wrap the wires in, they're moving those at 12, 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock in the morning. I have asked, we've called a couple of times over there to stress our displeasement about it, and then we ended up calling the police about it, and they had come out, but it's still persisting, still going on. I usually get up around 5:30, 6:00 o'clock in the morning myself, and it's disrupted my sleep and routine dramatically, I'm getting up exhausted just from them banging those things, and there's a couple of big dumpsters over there, I don't know what's going on over there, but they're like, I was wondering if they do go ahead with this parking lot, if it's clearly represented that it's for the cars of the employees, not for these big semis, and also if there could be some sort of, I work construction, so if we're working in a city or a village, there's restrictions on the times that we can start, and making noises like 7:00 AM till 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM, depending on the city, and I think if something like that could be implemented here with this, because it's gone beyond a joke, and there's a lot, there's a couple of people there, like are surrounding there that couldn't make it last Monday, and I was supposed to come and be here for that, but I ended up having an emergency at the job site, so I couldn't make it here, and we actually met here around 6:30, so I was running late, but that's why I'm here this evening.
Yeah, I watched that public hearing also, was Monday night.
Yeah.
What we're being asked to do is to vote on the ordinance, which was recommended unanimously by the planning and zoning commission. So, thank you for your comments, but I'd like City Manager Nicholas to do, and then I'd like to make a few comments also, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bill?
Well, Mr. Willard's comments are well taken, and the same comments were made in your absence at the Plan Commission meeting on Monday night, there seems to be a very strong interest by the neighbors, concern by the neighbors about having some better circumstances, which would include just the cars of the employees parking in the proposed parking lot, and no trucks parking there, which has been something that's gone on, as I understand it. Also, the large wire spools have from time to time made their presence over there because of the growth of the company and other avenues not being explored. This comes to you tonight after several months of interaction between our code enforcement folks, police department, the owners of the, or the managers of Naring Electric, and also some of the neighbors, I don't know, Mr. Willard, if you were involved in any of those conversations, probably working during the day, but.
My neighbor here is.
Okay, okay. And a number of things, in addition to what Mr. Willard had mentioned, were brought up, and that was also errant parking on the street, and then, in your background, you have, you have, Jeff is trying to read my mind, you've got here in your background also a picture that's represented here, which is that, you see the red outline of the proposed lot, and, I'm sorry, you're going to have to do that for me.
Got it.
Okay, and then?
I would point out that there is a dock right here, and what's happening is if the spools are here, or if there's semis parked here until they can unload, you can see, it would be very hard to navigate and back a semi into this dock to unload, and so what's proposed is this, this lot would only be used by cars, and it could be enforced by the city's code enforcement folks. This middle aisle, the driving aisle, and you can see the diagonal parking stalls, would be used, if at all, by semi, just to, if we go back, Jeff, to the, yeah. Yeah, that's good. In order to get a, if you're driving, if you ever driven a semi, you're going to, you would love to have a straight in to align your truck and then back in, so instead of trying to do this and go three or four backups, it's wide enough to come in here and then back straight into there, and then when the truck leaves, it can pull straight out and go whatever way it wants to go on the street. So that seemed to be the best we could do with the configuration of the neighborhood, the plant, the existing parking, it gets parking off the streets, so residents can have company visit them, and we can monitor this, just to see if that is working as planned. There were handshakes all around, there's also going to be screening of the fencing here, there was the proposal, there's a little bit of a landscape buffer, but the proposal will put a arbor by the hedge in there or something like that, but the fence was desired, so that's what the Plan Commission recommended to you, and the staff recommend to you. Principal Planner Dan Olson has spent a fair amount of time on this, and also recommended this package to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's, it's a, it's an improvement over what's there, it's not perfect, we can't, Mr., I think Scott Dillon is on the Zoom tonight, who is the Senior Vice President for Operations of Naring Electric, and is also in a position probably to address what the company's interest is in this particular proposal, and I think they, it doesn't, it's not perfect for them either, but it, they're going to have to help with the policing, they know it, they're going to have to talk to their employees, who are officially doing whatever they have to do to find a place to park, to get into the shift before it starts, so there's an investment involved here, and there's also a, the area over here that used to have spools, if you've driven up North 7th Street, you would see, and there's some sort of a line here, that area was a temporary solution until we could find out a solution for down here, so that we could relocate the spools over here, they're going to have to find a place to put more of those spools inside their compound, obviously, and they're investigating some other things, too. Now, the offset to this is, it's a company that in the old days just used to occupy this white roof section, this used to be houses, and I think you've been there long enough to know that, and a whole number of companies used to be down here, and it used to optimize houses where people would work in one of these places, now probably not the case. So it's a slowly changing neighborhood, it's industrially zoned, it goes back, and it's industrial zoning to the 19th century, late 19th century, so this seems, at least for the time, a reasonable solution to aggravations that the neighbors have experienced.
Yes, sir, would you fill out a speaker request form there? Oh, go, just go ahead, yeah, and just identify yourself.
Hi.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to stand up for a little while, but hey, what you're talking about is, are you saying when the new parking lot is finished, they are going to be allowed to pull a semi up on there?
Just to align it so it can back into the, just to align it so they can back it into this pool shop, and then it's across the street, not.
What's the, how long, all right, now you got a truck to come in, watch this process once he pulls up on there, is he to pull straight back, or is he going to sit there a half an hour or 45 minutes?
We'll have the police department and the code enforcement division are working with this, with the company, we'll enforce.
Because the last time all this went on, years ago, we were left hanging. We have eight, 10, 12 trucks at a time in there, and nobody did a pollution control to see what all the pollution is, from eight or 10 or 12 diesel trucks at one time, you step outside, that's what you smell, you smell diesel fuel. All hours of the night, you know what noise is going to be made next, so that's what I was asking for, was from this period of 8:00 till 5:00 in the morning, something should be inserted there to say, these folks get a decent night's sleep, instead of listening to someone drag a big container across the ground, or, and this goes on every night. Am I right?
Yeah, you're right, second.
Yeah. And they moved the reels over by my house, so they could dig up a whole new lot, so I've been working with Don all summer, and trying to get things straightened out, and we, we were told absolutely no trucks on the parking lot, none, because, tell you what, you can ask her and tell what I did, so they moved the reels over, and they moved the reels back, soon as they moved the reels back, they started parking semis up out of my house, and now they're getting, they're starting to stay all night, until I take my truck out there, I pull my truck up next to his, I lock it up, go back over to my house, and hit my panic button. Did I?
I think what.
After about 15 minutes, he decided, you know, he wasn't going to get no rest, so what I'm saying about is if we, if we give a little, if we give a little, they take a lot. Now Scott, Scott's a heck of a guy to work with, I've been working with him, the guy's a gentleman, he straightforward about everything, and there's no BS to him at all when he talks to you, but I'm saying, the folks that live there, the noise, way too much noise, even there for a long time, I don't see, all right, I say, here's the law, here's the law, he pull up, there's a big sign that says, no parking anytime, on the other side of that sign that was put up by the city, no semi parking this side of the street, that was never enforced, ever.
I think what we're talking about here tonight is a ordinance request for the special use permit for the parking lot, and I think if, if there are concerns that you have regarding parking elsewhere or noise, Mr. Wilford alluded to that, I think that's a separate issue, I don't think we should tie it into this particular request, but I think you, you would probably best serve by working with us, we'd be happy to meet with you, facilitate a meeting with the folks at Naring, and see if we can get something done in terms of some of these other requests.
I've been doing everything through code enforcement with Don, Bill, you've seen me over there several times, I've been, I've been coming down and been, been a complete gentleman about it, but if I go over there and ask that lady any question at all, she gets all upset and mad, and she says, well, you wanted the trucks off the street, well, they're off the street, now you deal with it.
Well, they're not going to be in that parking lot.
That's what I'm saying.
They're not going to be in that parking lot. That was part and parcel of the agreement that they agreed to, that is part of what we're voting on tonight.
Those guys, that semi driver, they can make that turn, they can make that turn off 11th Street onto Locust, with one, I mean, they don't have to pull up and back, up and back, they pull up, and then they can pull up in the driveway like you're going to go up into the parking lot, you understand what I'm talking about, Bill? So right in front, once that truck comes around and swings around, he can pull straight up and go straight back in. What we don't want is these semis sitting up in that parking lot for hour after hour idling. What do we do, how do we enjoy our backyard?
We will.
That's happening right now, that they're sitting there, and supposedly for five, 10 minutes, just sort of get in and out, but where they're loading them, it's not 10 minutes, it's an hour, an hour and a half, and then, I've taken pictures, I have them on the phone here, that the parking lot across the street is only about half full or three quarters full with the ships through the day, like when I was off there, I've taken pictures of them, and even in the picture that's up there at the moment, there's only, you see how many cars are in there? So they want this parking lot over there supposedly for the employee, but really, it's for the semis to come in and back in there, so none of them employees are going to park their cars there, would be afraid that they're going to get hit by a semi.
So I'll, I'll still work, I'll still work along with Don, and since she's code enforcement, and I mean, she's straight up, when she says, Jim, this ain't going to happen, and she told me there will be no truck parking in that lot.
And what she said is correct, and that what she.
She says, they got, they got one, they got one bay to come in, two for a semi, that's going to load reels, then you got two bays for what they call a van trailer. that's going to load reels. Then you got two bays for what they call a van trailer. And then you got one more over on the side there that they can load. But now Dawn is telling me that they're going to relay the trucks from a different area. And when this truck gets done, they call another truck in. The trucks will not be sitting on the street. That's what I'm told. And anything you want to point against is to take it up with your park district over there on the, on the same end of town. And they're mortal enemies when it comes to the company. The guys, the guys from the park district, but I'd say at least three or four times a day couldn't get their equipment down that street. If you had a fire there, you couldn't get a fire truck down that street. Ain't no way.
No, last Friday, I couldn't even get
Yeah.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for your input. Again, I wish you would have been at the Public and Zoning Commission meeting the other night. I watched it. I wasn't here, but I watched it. And what I saw was a, a general consensus that, as City Manager Nicholas said, this isn't a perfect situation, but in terms of that parking lot, it is an improvement in the property. Going forward, I would encourage you to continue to work with Dawn and others. And we will, we want to make sure that this is a solution that works for both the neighbors and the company. Because obviously, we want to be a, a community that is friendly to our business as well as to our neighborhoods. With that, I'd open it up to any further discussion. City Manager, or excuse me, Alderman Perkins.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So I guess, some of it's some clarification to begin with. So the residential neighborhood there, is that zoned as a residential neighborhood?
Dan, if you'd come to the, Principal Planner Dan Olson, who was at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting the other night.
So, so that the parking lot is in a residential neighborhood area?
Yes, zoning a single-family residential in a parking lot when it's a principal use is a special use permit if it's serving a use within 300 feet. So that's why there was a special use request.
Okay.
There's also variance on setbacks, but it is a single-family zoning, yes.
Okay. Then second question, the, the green area behind the parking area on the north side, what is that?
The green area?
If you could go north, north a little further, right there, right there.
They are, there is, spools are being stored right here right now, and it's enclosed. So that was former parking area up here and here, but now it's full of spools. So they need the additional parking. So they're getting 20 parking spaces here on this lot.
Okay. Then the third question, the, the 11th Street area, is that an area where semi traffic is permissible then?
I don't think there's any restrictions on semi traffic, but I think most of the traffic, according to Scott Dillon, is, uses 10th Street, the primary access to that area.
They enter, they enter off of 10th and leave on 11th.
Okay. Ruth, Ruth, would you kindly get a speaker request form so we have this in public record, the gentleman who would like to speak? Ma'am, would you like to speak? Would you please fill out a speaker request form? Because at this point, you are out of order.
Oh.
Okay? And I want you to speak, believe me. Of course, you've taken the opportunity to speak. I just want to make sure that we have for the public record your name, as Mr. Wilford filled out his form. Dan, would you like to say something? And then I'd like to move over to Alderman Verbi.
In the ordinance, what the commission recommended, and it's in your ordinance, four conditions. No truck parking on the site. Anything over five tons or more cannot be parked on the site. But they can maneuver semis, as was discussed. That's why there is a drive aisle that's 17, a little bit wider than what's required. So they can maneuver trucks backing up into the loading docks, which is right here. So, but no extended parking of any trucks or semis. There has to be signage placed on the lot that shows the weight limits for the trucks. The parking lot has to be paved within six months after the special use permit. Currently, right now, there's, it's gravel. There was some, we did issue a temporary permit for some temporary storage of the spools. It is gravel. There was a storm sewer added to that. But they can't park on there now until they do that. So they also have to put paver blocks up if they're going to park on there. And then a commission recommendation was to make sure traffic as they're leaving the site, there's a left turn only at the alley. So they do turn left out onto 11th Street and not go the other way on the alley to 10th Street. So just wanted to make clear those conditions that the commission made part of the recommendation and is in the ordinance.
Before I turn it over to Alderman Verbi, it was, was it your consensus the other night that we, that there was pretty much agreement, an agreement from those neighbors with whom the folks from Naring had talked, that this particular parking lot expansion made sense? Okay? I hear some other things tonight, and we certainly want to address those, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Wilford, we really do. But the consensus was that what's being brought before us tonight was vetted, was, was discussed quite exhaustively, frankly, at the Planning and Zoning Commission the other night. And that's what's being, what we're being asked to take a look at. So I do appreciate the comment. Alderman Verbi.
Alderman Perkins, does you have a follow-up on that? I saw your hand up.
It was just to echo the, the point that was raised where, I drove past today, and what I saw today is exactly what I saw described there. And it was, I mean, it was at lunchtime I drove past, and there was two semis in the street, and a third one that had come out and was exiting on 11th Street. So, you know, I, I recognize, and I'm sensitive to the, the business-friendly thought, but I think the business-friendly thought involves being a good neighbor, too.
Yes, absolutely.
And with these folks, you know, and, and enforcing what we already have out there. We have rules out there that we're not enforcing, and we're looking for an extension. I'm just, those are the things that I have rumbling around in my head here. You know, because the semi thing, in my, you know, I, I deal with truck drivers all day, every day, and they're looking for a place to park nearby. So, you know, there's not much room there. So I, I hear the concern of if we, if we create a parking lot there in a residential neighborhood, it's going to create a compliance issue that we're already not enforcing.
And this is in your ward, is it not? Yeah, this is in the fourth ward.
Yep. And Mr., as Bill mentioned, Scott Dillon with Naring is on Zoom, and I think he could certainly answer or maybe respond.
Scott, are you on the Zoom? Scott Dillon, are you on the Zoom?
I'm muted.
Would you unmute yourself, please?
He did.
Are you, yeah. Unmute yourself, please. Would you have any comments?
His microphone might not be working. He is unmuted, so.
Maybe he can type in the chat.
Okay. We cannot hear you. Alderman Verbi.
Well, certainly our preference is this not turn into a daily enforcement task for our staff, calls to police, those kinds of things. From what I'm hearing, though, is we have the assurances that it's not a truck stop. That's correct. Does the company have cameras that cover the perimeter that could get license plates of trucks that could be potential violators? Do they have a view of, of what's going on? Do we know?
I can't speak if they have cameras on the outside, but the applicant Scott Dillon was very good to work with. They've agreed to all these conditions, no objections whatsoever. They worked with Mr. Gibson. I know he wanted to fence up alongside instead of the landscaping, and they're going to put a six-foot-high solid wood fence up before they can park anything on there. And as mentioned, the code enforcement, if they're parking any trucks over there, extended time, they'd be in violation of the special use permit, so.
Well, cam, cameras are so inexpensive these days, so that's why I was getting at, if, if we do have cameras that are recording this, and it's a, a steeper fine for these trucks to be parked there for too long, then we have a record of this that can be enforced without all these judgment calls. We have it on video. I think that would really help the neighborhood, rather than our staff being called on, and for heaven's sakes, police being called out on this. And also, our, our noise ordinance is pretty clear. So again, I would rather not have the police called to enforce noise ordinances overnight. I think that that should be able to be worked out within the company's operations.
Mr. Dillon, can you hear us now?
It's still not working, but he, he messaged me some comments. So you want me to read them?
Yes.
Okay. He said he would like to reassure everyone that they will not use the parking lot for truck parking. We do not have, we do have cameras on the outside of the building. And we are also adding a banner to direct the trucks to a staging lot.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do here tonight is to see what councils wish is, we have a motion on the floor, a second, that we approve this special use permit based on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, I would, Mr. Wilford, yeah, go up to the podium if you would. And, you know, I don't want to delay an improvement for the sake of trying to address some issues that are not part and parcel of the agreement, if you understand that. But it's up to this council, this council could very well delay consideration of this, if that is the desire of the council. Yes, sir?
Well, if the parking lot was put in place and all the regulations were
Could you, could you take your mask off so I could understand you? Thank you.
If the parking lot was put in place and everything that they're saying they're going to do is done, which they're not doing at the moment, the trucks are there parked. And also, when you go back to the, where the lot is on the screen, there's a park there that kids play, all the neighborhood kids play in that area. So you have semis coming out of there, and the streets lined up with semis. And in the summer, that, that little park there to the park district, it's a great place. The kids love it. Like, you could see 20, 30 kids playing over there as well. And that's another concern. And when we had the spools over there, I couldn't believe it. We were on vacation in California, and we came back, and I seen the spools. And I'm like, what? You know, nothing, nothing there, no cones, no fencing, no temporary, nothing, when they had the cones there. So if they're getting away with stuff like that, you know, I, I married my wife 23 years ago. She's lived in the house there for 44 years. So I was here. I was around when the houses were where that factory is now. I've been, I've seen the company expand, and fair play to them, you know, that's great. It's good to see something like that happen. You know, I'm just worried about my kids. I'm worried about Friday when my wife's trying to get to the store, and she can't get there because the semis are there. If everything's put in, the restrictions and everything are enforced and everything, we have no problem with it. We just want to make sure that they're enforced, because if they're not, I've called the police numerous times, and it's affecting my work, because I end up sleeping in because I'm wrecked, and going to work late to a job site and stuff. And it isn't very professional on my side, on my, my little construction company. So they're a bigger company and everything else like that, and I understand that. But as long as these things are put in place, where do we go then? If we call the police and this stuff is still going on, who do we voice our opinion to then? Because Mr. Gibson, I, I work around Aurora in Chicago. I drive up and down 88 all the time. So he's been going down and dealing with everybody. And I just came here, I was supposed to be here last Monday because everybody else was unavailable to come. But I had an emergency, and by the time I got here, I got here at 6:20, and the meeting was over.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mr. Verbi said, and that is that we, we, we care about the neighborhood, believe me, you know?
Yeah, obviously. No, I'm just pointing out that there's kids there, you know, and that's another main concern, too, with these semis and stuff. And the reason I'm saying that is my own father, he used to drive semis, and he was involved in an accident with a little girl and a bicycle. Something not like this, but she came down a hill, the brakes went on her bike, and he didn't even realize she was under the trailer. So that's another thing. Like, these truckers need to be aware of kids playing in the, in that area, too.
We would hope so.
Yeah. Thank you.
City Man, yes, sir, thank you. City Manager Nicholas.
My microphone's not working now. Would you like to?
I, I can't hear you.
My microphone is not working.
Okay, Scott, yours on there. I'm going to let City Manager Nicholas make a comment, and then I understand Scott's on.
Mr. Mayor, let Mr. Dillon speak, and then I'll speak. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon, please.
Hello. So I'd first like to say that I'm fairly new to Naring, but I would like to work with the neighbors. I think it's healthy to have a good, you know, neighborhood relationship with, with all of our neighbors. So there's a number of other steps we're taking. We're getting a banner put on the side of the building to direct trucks to a staging lot. We're adamant that we're not going to use that parking lot for truck parking. And that, and to me, I mean, that's what this is really about, is, is I understand that there's some difficulties. And it sounds like we should have some other discussions outside of this. But as far as the parking lot's concerned, the main purpose is to alleviate on-stream park, on-street parking. And that's what it should do, and it should help the neighborhood in general around that. I do understand there's some other issues, and I'm open to having further discussions with the neighbors regarding those and seeing what we can do to address that.
Yeah, and that's where I was going to, in terms of this particular request. Alderman Morris.
I mean, if it seems, it seems like the issues with on-street parking are not related to cars, as they're suggesting are going to be put in this parking lot. So my concerns are very much like Alderman Perkins. You know, we need to be able to enforce what we already have. And I, I hear absolutely what Mr. Willard is saying, you know, suggesting that the whole purpose of this spot is, is an in-between point. And if we can't enforce what we already have, why do we think we're going to be able to enforce adding, you know, saying that, oh, only cars can park in this lot? You know, I, I think that what it looks like, you know, and Mr. Willard spoke to this, I was going to ask when that triangle, you know, of, of business space was, was changed from residential to, to business zoning. And so it sounds like it's happened in the last 44 years. And it sounds like it, the, the business may have overgrown its space at this point. And it may be time to go to a different spot. I'm also curious to hear from Mr. Dillon, where the staging lot is that the trucks are going to be redirected to.
Yes, the staging lot is on 7th Street, across the railroad tracks. It's an empty lot that I believe is controlled by the city. So if you look at the map, I don't know if you have it there, on the west side into the north, just above where you, you can't see, there's, can you go back to, yeah, right there. So on that map there, far, yep, right there. That's correct. That's the staging lot. So the idea is, is we'd have a sign that's made. We need to put it on the side of the building. And that's one of the, I've talked to a number of police officers that came by, and they understand the challenges of, of truck drivers. But we get that, the banner set up and have them directed to park there. We have a phone number on them, on that, for them to call, say that they're available, and we put them in queue, and they park or stage there. And then when we have a, a lane open or a dock open, then we would call them and tell them to proceed to that lane.
So I guess my struggle is that this parking lot is purported to be for cars, but there is not a car problem. So it seems odd.
If There is a car problem.
If I could address that. So I, I believe there is a car problem. I mean, the reason why we submitted this was, if you look at the buildings that we've grown into and we're continuing to expand, the issue is, is on first shift, where we have 70 employees parking coming into a parking lot that's already full, that's where it leads to us parking on the street. And that is parking legally, but it's in competition with the neighbors for the available parking space. This would help with that.
Any further discussion? City Manager Nicholas.
I think everybody is in agreement on one thing, which is, this is a matter of enforcement. I mean, the question is, will it be enforced, or will it not? Right? I mean, the, the best plan looks great on paper, but if it's not enforced.
Absolutely.
And Alderman Verbi pointed out, we don't want to be over there every day, any more than the neighbors want to have that problem, which is a bigger problem for them, because they're proximate to it. They hear it, they see it. And Mr. Dillon is in good faith, saying he'd like And Mr. Dillon is in good faith, saying he'd like to see to it that that doesn't happen, but he has to provide some enforcement internally with respect to the drivers and so forth. And that lot that he pointed out is a, was an old area, there was an old, what was it, the old coal, yeah, right, that was there that the city condemned and tore down maybe 10 years ago. It's still a, it's an old concrete paved area, so it is suitable, it's not, it's not a brand-new parking area, but it's, it's suitable for the time being till we can see what can happen. So, the question really is, do you want a parking lot that can be enforced, it's going to have striped parking, it's going to be a paved parking lot, not a gravel parking lot? Do you want to have that to wrestle over for enforcement? Or the willy-nilly gravel, sand, dirt parking area now? I would think that the neighbors would want to have at least paved, and the company's willing to pave it, stripe it, so we can more adequately enforce it. There won't be cars just pulled in or trucks just pulled in, there isn't going to be any trucks parked there. That seems to be an improvement. It's not everything, it's not perfect, but it's an improvement.
Alderman Morris.
So I guess, you know, what I'm thinking is, construction season for creating this parking lot isn't for a few months still.
Correct.
You know, we have at least three months before you could begin this project. I wonder if we couldn't put this on pause and see if we can't get the semi trucks under control in the next three months, and then if we can find that we have a good relationship between neighbors at that point, then we can entrust more opportunity for more enforcement.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, may I ask you something, please?
One more, please, Mr. Gibson, very quickly to the thing.
I just want to say, since Scott's here, and we talk to each other and that kind of stuff, over the last five or six months, about 60% of this situation has been resolved. So he is doing his job. I will give him credit for that.
So are you comfortable with us going ahead and, and at least starting the progress on the parking lot, but to continue to address the issues that you and Mr. Wilford brought forward?
Me and, I'm working with Dawn.
Good.
She's the head of code, so, so she's the lady, she just tries to take and keep my anxiety at a certain level.
Okay, very good.
But anyway, I, I have to commend Scott, because he did come and put the cones down so no semis could come up in there, and, I mean, he did that right away. So I just want him to know that I appreciate that. But with the plan that he's got, then we should not have a problem on local or levels.
I think, yeah, I think this is a, a situation with mutual trust, moving forward.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, sure. We have a motion on the floor, and a second. Any further discussion? Alderman Perkins.
I have one comment, and I'll echo what, what Carolyn was saying.
Please.
I, I think the big thing with this is it involves neighbors being good neighbors. You know, and if, if, if everyone's listening to each other and cooperating, and it sounds like we're on a path to do that and improve that, then I think that, that's a great direction to be. We go, it is an area where you've got a business that's growing, and we want the business to be able to grow, but the business has to grow in a healthy way that's healthy, healthy for the neighborhood and for that park. You know, so, those are, those are my big concerns.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbi.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. Is there a desire to waive second reading and approve this parking lot improvement We will then move this to our next council meeting bill, perhaps even further beyond that. We'll be asking Naring and Scott to work, continue to work with the neighbors. We'll bring this back for second reading, perhaps at our next meeting. Does that make sense to everyone here on council? Yes. Okay, good, thank you.
I'd like to, as far as the semi situation, if Naring is actually going to implement that, we could put in the parking lot over there, because that's a problem right, right now, this moment, last Friday, you know, and I know your wife, I'm keeping her there tonight, and I can't, last week, well, she was saying about implementing that and having that go forward, I'd like to see that stipulated somewhere in these proceedings that that happens, so that next Friday when my wife needs to go to the store, she not blocked any.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Okay, we move along now to reports and communications. This allows any of our council members to make any reports, communicate anything they would like, along with our city clerk and our city manager. First off is Carolyn Morris, our first ward, Alderman.
So I just want to clarify to begin with, that you understand that we are going to review this again, probably at the next meeting, and so feedback would be very welcome then as well. So, I just want to acknowledge for our community that this week has been a really hard week for our nation, and I want to acknowledge that and not let this experience of our community go by without, without mentioning it. So I just want to say, hold your loved ones tight and stay safe in these times.
Thank you. Alderman Finouken.
Yeah, I have two items I'd like to mention. The first one, the past 12 months have experienced attacks on federal, state, and local government entities from both the far left and the far right. I condemn all of these attacks. Moving forward, we must work to lessen the differences that divide us, and hopefully we'll be able to do that. Secondly, the COVAC vaccine has begun to be distributed. I encourage everyone to get that important shot when it becomes available to you. In the meantime, maintain social distance, wear your mask, avoid crowded or larger gatherings, and wash your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Finouken. Alderman Smith.
One brief notice, please move your cars off the snow route streets when it snows. I, I've got numerous calls and complaints, and I, I'm going to ask that we strictly enforce that the next time around. We used to, I, I just, the number, it's hard on our street crews, and they, they are so understaffed at this moment. Please move your cars off the streets, especially the snow truck, the snow routes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
I just want to thank you folks for coming out and expressing, you know, your, your thoughts on this parking situation. I want to thank Mr. Dillon for coming out and being available for comments, and if there's anything I can help in the, along the way to ensure that we're all on the same path and moving forward, I'm more than willing to help.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. Alderman McAdams, fifth ward.
No report.
Alderman Verbi, sixth ward.
No report.
Alderman Favor, seventh ward.
No report.
City clerk report, Lynn Fazekas.
No report.
And city manager, a final report.
No report.
Okay, with that, that concludes the regular session of our city council meeting. I have been informed that we do have to go into executive session in, in just a moment to, in order to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C11. I would remind those folks on Zoom that we must say goodnight to you because of security situations with Zoom and virtual attendance, we can only do that here face-to-face in person. So with that, I would ask for a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we go into recess for executive session. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdam.
Yes.
Verbi.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That motion passes. We are now in recess for executive session. Thank you very much.